Through the April 1st, a school board meeting. It's a special school board meeting for a public hearing on the possible adjustments to attendance lines affecting chancellor, Cortland, Massiaponics, and Spotsylvania High Schools, the Spotsylvania County School Board Administrative Services, and the boardroom. I would ask if everyone would take a moment to either put their phones on silent or turn them off so it does not interrupt speakers as they come forward. I also would like to inform you that each speaker will be given five minutes to speak during this particular meeting. However, as customary, we will not extend the, pass the five-minute allocation because we'll have a number of speakers. And so if we could ask you to wrap up your comments in five minutes. That being said, we have a quorum. All board members are present. The chair would now entertain a motion to approve or adopt the budget. I mean, the agenda, excuse me.
I will second.
We have it moved by Ms. Shelley and seconded by Ms. Phelps. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and the motion carries seven zero. If the assembly would please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Graham.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under the individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. We'll move to four point zero one, the public hearing. I just want to let those that are signed to speak understand and know that you have the opportunity to speak. Board members will not engage in dialogue with you. We're here to listen, and so that's what we'll do.
Tell them to speak into the microphone.
Oh, yeah. And if you could, please, as you're making your comments, to please speak into the microphone so everyone can hear what you have to say. Dr. Martin.
Good evening. The public hearing this evening provides an opportunity for the public to make comments to the school board about the proposals shared in four informational sessions regarding redistricting considerations that were held at the affected schools on March 14th, 18th, 19th, and 20th, 2019. Be informed that all speakers must limit their comments strictly to those pertaining to the redistricting. School board policy requires speakers to state their name and address or voting district for the record. Students must state their name and school. Each speaker is allotted five minutes to address the board. First speaker is Angela Shawin.
I'm Angela Shwarin. Address is six zero zero one Greenspring Road in Fredericksburg. I'm here on behalf of myself and my husband, Thomas Shwarin, who's in the audience as well. He's also was previously a coach at Massiaponics High School for several seasons. We're here to let you know that we really support this, the redistricting, and we have seen firsthand how overcrowded Massiaponics is. We put two students through there, and we have a third student that's a rising freshman, and we're not interested in having him have the same experience and see firsthand what happens with an overcrowded high school. So, we would just let you know, we're here to support it, and we're excited about it, and hope that it does go through. Thank you.
Kaitlin Simmons.
Good evening, school board. My name is Kaitlin Simmons, and I am currently a junior at Massiaponics High School. And I'm here today to oppose the current move of Lee's Park students from Massiaponics High School to Cortland High School for three reasons. Number one, Massiaponics High School has an impressive range of classes, especially when it comes to AP classes. Cortland's range, however, is significantly less notable, especially when it comes to the AP Capstone program. This program's lack of availability at Cortland would disadvantage those students who are currently in Massiaponics High School and desire to take this program, which could give them the upper hand in college courses. Another issue that this brings forth is that of class rankings. At Cortland, since those students have less opportunities to take AP classes, many of their GPAs will be inherently lower than those of students at Massiaponics who had the opportunity to take these classes. In shifting these current Massiaponics students to Cortland, you would demolish the ranking system, shaking it up sufficiently and disadvantaging students who attended Cortland originally. This will be lost ground that these students will not be able to recover because Cortland simply does not have the AP classes to allow these students to regain that ground. Number two, the fine arts program at Massiaponics High School is a prestigious and notable program that competes at a high level. For example, the Massiaponics Marching Panther Pride has competed at both the 4A and 5A level in multiple competitions throughout various states, whereas Cortland's Marching Royal Brigade only competes at a 3A level. Sports, however, are even worse. At Massiaponics High School, there are 4A boys and girls lacrosse teams. However, at Cortland, the closest thing to that is a club. This disadvantages players who are competing to get scholarships, since many of these players are scouted starting as early as junior year. Transferring these students to Cortland would be denying them the opportunity to be scouted. Every single sport at Massiaponics also ranges between the 4A to 6A range. This evidently shows the high caliber of sports offered. Because of these higher ranges, more scouts will come looking at these players, and many Massiaponics athletes get offered scholarships to notable schools like West Point, UVA, and Virginia Tech. Cortland, however, has lower caliber athletics with ranges 3A and below. If athletes who are currently in Massiaponics were forced to play at Cortland and compete at these lower levels, their chances of getting opportunities to play for notable colleges will plummet. Number three, shifting Massiaponics to Cortland is a temporary solution to a permanent problem. In doing this, we are just going to be making Cortland's situation in the future even worse. With housing complexes on the rise in the area, if we shift people to Cortland, Cortland will become just as overpopulated as Massiaponics, and many of us will be back here, sitting in these same chairs, one, two, maybe even three years later, as you attempt to move us to Spotsylvania High School, or chancellor, or hopefully a newly-built sixth high school. This current plan solves nothing and just ruins the lives of hundreds of students who will be forced to uproot themselves and change course, only to have to do the exact same thing again a couple of years later. Please, when you make this decision, keep in mind every single student you will be switching to a different high school. Thank you, and please consider my comments in taking your reading.
My name is Colleen Simmons, and I live at six zero three nine Greenspring Road. My daughter just made her concerns. I just had one more point to bring up. It's basically the timing of all of this. Massiaponics, according to your own PowerPoint, basically has been overcrowded since 2009. It's a long time. And we, Cortland just got a few more spots. I get that. That's great. But it's not a lot considering how many more houses are being built. How many more houses are being built in Lee's Park, for example? You move all the people from Lee's Park over to Cortland, and in probably a year or two, we're going to be looking at Cortland again being overcrowded. And yes, I have a senior, but I also have a few more down the line, and I would rather them not have to be changing schools again, too. So I would really like to consider extending the time, maybe looking at this a little bit longer. Again, the recommendation at the end of your PowerPoint was that we need to do a long-term study to look at all elementary levels, middle school levels, high schools. And if you do decide to change the high schools now, again, it's a few, it seems like a small amount of students, 400, 600, that's a lot of people. It's a lot of families with a lot of people affected. How many people are going to end up with students at two different high schools? Three different schools? I mean, it can happen if you keep redistricting and redistricting. And that is something, again, we all know the numbers, and they're not pretty, and we are going to have to change. I understand that. And just concerned that we're going to be changing it again, and again, and again. So I would recommend that we wait for a longer-term plan to come up with a solution for all the schools, maybe change them all at once. You know, maybe, or that might be too much for the system. I don't know. I don't know all the details. It's a lot of people, and again, that goes back to the timing here. There's a lot of students that are going to have to be changed. There's a lot of people who are going to have to, you know, ask for different classes or, you know, go through the different processes. That is a lot for the staff to handle in, it's April. This has to be done by August. That's very quick. So just consider that maybe waiting a little bit longer might be the best plan. Thank you.
Dorothy Franz.
Dorothy Franz, one zero one one zero Stanley Court. I currently have a freshman in Cortland High, an eighth grader in Spatsy, and a kindergartner in Cortland Elementary. We are opposed to the redistricting plan, to piggyback on the lady who was just up here. It's a really short time to switch all of this up. The biggest concern is electives. So from what I understand, my freshman, soon-to-be sophomore, would kind of just need to get whatever is available to fit him in that still has openings. Electives are pretty much a quarter to a half of a student's report card. This would really affect him. He doesn't have things right now that fit him and what he wants to do. And he's a smart kid, but he's not going to do well with what's available to him at Spatsy right now. And I don't know what there is for this type of situation where we just have to suck it up and deal with it. We only have a couple of months. Why couldn't we have gotten in when electives could have been chosen? That would have really been helpful. That would have had the students' best interest in mind, because now they're just going to get whatever, and I don't really feel like that's fair to them. As the other parent just said, the housing is going crazy with building. Who knows how many people are going to really end up there in the next five years? What then? We switch again? I have another kid that's going to end up a freshman going to another school as a sophomore? Take, I feel like it needs more time. What is this really going to solve right now? And that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Michelle Shropshire.
My name is Michelle Shropshire. My address is five two zero three Yellow Birch Drive. I live in Lee's Park. I'm here this evening on behalf of myself, my husband, and my two daughters, one of which attends Massiaponics High School. We are opposed to the redistricting. As many people have mentioned tonight, I feel the plan has been hurried. I feel the options that were presented really aren't options, especially for certain neighborhoods, especially Lee's Park, but several others as well. I feel like some of the information that led up to these options, particularly some of the committee meetings, have not, the information from those haven't really been made available for all citizens to review and inspect. I don't know if that is available or not. I couldn't really find it on the website, but I assume it's available if it's FOIA'd, which I can make that request, I guess, if needed. I also have concerns with, as many people have mentioned tonight, parallel programs between the high schools. I know there are not parallel programs that currently exist. I know one of the answers has been, that has been conveyed is that they will follow the students. If this plan is as hurried as has been mentioned this evening, I'm not sure that a parallel program track can follow that quickly as well. I'm not convinced of that. I'd also like to understand some of the numbers. It was mentioned that 410 students would be moved with option one and 632 with the second, but I've seen no analysis on how those numbers would be impacted with the potential waivers that would be given to seniors and then potentially juniors and then other situations that might happen with siblings of those, and how is there any plan to combat, you know, circumventing that policy, and how those numbers will really impact that system? And I also would like to see if there's some kind of analysis of the cost of this right now versus a full-blown study that would have a longer-term solution. I believe, like many speakers have said, that we're rushing into this and that there would have to be another plan that would be implemented later on that would further impact even more neighborhoods and more students. So again, we're opposed to this, and I thank you for your time this evening.
Stacy Gardner.
Stacy Gardner. I live on nine six oh six Tremont Lane. I'm opposed to it right now. I do see overcrowding, but I think it needs to wait for long-term goals and objectives because it does feel rushed. But if it does go through, I did want to ask to see if my small community could stay at Cortland instead of going to Spatsy. We have three teachers in that little community, and they're only sending three high school students and one middle school student recently, or soon. So I'd like to ask to stay if it is pushed through. Thank you.
Christine Stevens.
I live at one oh eight one two Honorable Court. I'm a new development that kind of bred off of wild turkey. There's only three houses there, only 11 properties, and we kind of got thrown into our changing of districts also. When I bought it, I built a house. I knew exactly the district. That's what I looked for, and now things are changing, and I understand the overpopulation of all these schools. I understand that. But the same as the last speaker, there's currently only three students right there for now, and we got kind of thrown into the mix. So I'd also like the consideration of just our small development to try to stay in Cortland High School right now. Thank you.
Melissa Rivera.
I'm Melissa Rivera. I'm currently a junior at Massiaponics High School. I'm not from Lee's Park, as many of the prior speakers are from. I'm living in Breezewood in the townhouses, and I didn't quite get the opportunity to speak at the last meeting or so. And I just wanted to say that I know how overcrowded Ponix is, and that, yes, the rezoning should be, like, done soon, but I feel like it's too quick. I was like, aware, I was informed of the potential rezoning of, like, where I live super recently, like, not like days before the public hearing, and I just feel like it's too soon. And as much as I'm grateful for the special permission grandfather rule that's been given or whatever, I, the one thing is that the transportation. It's been said that the common trend or whatever with the new housing are apartments and townhouses, but the situation with those types of, like, limited conditions or whatever is that you're limited to the number of parking spaces or whatever because it's a smaller building, as well as, like, family situations and financial situations or whatever. Most of the demographic living in these said townhouses and apartments are of minority families who work long hours or whatever to make their ends meet or whatever, and simply do not have enough money or whatever to purchase another car for their student or whatever to drive. Luckily, not luckily, but with my current situation is that I'm not eligible for my license until a month and a half into the school year or whatever. And so that ruins my potential to get any sort of transportation for a good two months or whatever. Because my mom works so many hours or whatever, she's not able to pick me up from school or not if I'm not told about getting early release from my schedule that I requested for. And I feel like, like I said, that it's being rushed. I'm not sure if anybody else in my, like, specific, like, actual neighborhood or whatever are aware of this or whatever, because there's been lack of, like, communication from the county to us, the people, hey, we're redistricting very soon. And, yeah, I think that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Cindy Carroll.
My name is Cindy Carroll, and I live in Lee's Park, and I currently have a freshman at Massiaponics. I'm opposed to this right now because I think everyone knew that Massiaponics has been overcrowded for quite some time. I, it'll be eight years that we've been in this area, and I've been hearing about it since we moved here. I just feel like all the students that are already in Massiaponics, it's not fair to them that they've invested so much in that school. For instance, my son, he's the only freshman, from my understanding, that wakes up at 5:00 AM and goes, and has a Massiaponics at 6:00 AM three times a week to do the football workouts. He stays till 5:00, four days a week, to do the remaining of the football workouts, and then he comes back from 7:09 to do the basketball with Massiaponics. He has straight A's. He's worked really hard. He's now starting to get anxiety, and he's, you know, worried about this whole situation. I'm trying to, you know, keep him calm, trying to tell him if this were to happen, you know, look at the bright side, look at the positive side. But it is difficult because, again, he has worked so hard to invest in the school, and his coaches obviously don't want him to leave, and he, you know, has worked so hard to make an impression on his coaches, and then to find out that the schools are at two different, I guess, levels of competition with sports and even some academic, you know, classes that he's taking. My thing of it is, it's, I don't understand why they don't give the option to the existing students that are already there. We all know it's crowded already, and they get through it somehow, way or another. I have a rising freshman. I've even considered the fact that if she didn't have the opportunity to go to Massiaponics and had to go to Cortland, fine, you know, but it's not fair to him, and it's not fair to all the children that are already at Massiaponics who've invested and worked really hard at this school to have to pick up and restart. My other concern is that there's, you know, kids talk, there's a lot of word that athletes are coming from Ponix. So, you know, there's a lot of cuts at Cortland. I know in football, at least in Ponix, from my understanding, they all make it's just a matter of who plays, but in Cortland, they cut. So these kids have worked last year and got recognized. So what if these Ponix kids come and now take their positions? I'm a little concerned that there might be a little bit of rivalry between Cortland and Ponix kids at this point, you know? So I understand, you know, there needs to be a rezoning in the future. I just feel like it's a little rushed. I went to the first meeting, and from my understanding, they said that Riverbend is more crowded than Massiaponics at any given day because Ponix children, they go to Cortland and they go to Spatsy for other classes, but they haven't touched that school at all. So it's just something that, it needs to be fair all across the board if anything, you know, if you guys were to make a decision. Again, when you guys are making this decision, I just, you know, from all the parents, if you guys could really take in heart these children's lives and how it's going to impact them emotionally, socially, and academically, and even, you know, with sports, because some of these kids take sports very serious, like my son. So, you know, I just ask that if y'all could just please, you know, just highly consider, I mean, we're all in the same boat, but these are children. These are not adults yet. These are children, and if they've been crowded for the last few years, what's a year or two to make sure that everything is prepared for them so when they do transition, it's much easier, and it's not just like they get thrown, and the kids who are going to the schools are going to be affected tremendously, most likely in a negative way. Thank you very much.
Robert Fitzpatrick.
My name is Robert Fitzpatrick. I'm a freshman at Massiaponics High School. I just wanted to reiterate some points. This decision, in my opinion, and it's a very popular decision, opinion where I'm from, is that this decision is being made way too fast. We've had since 2009 to prepare for this, but it seems like we haven't thought about the impacts on the students' lives. We've just been thinking about the maps. And going beyond just the academically achieving and the athletes in the schools, we're missing some crucial points, like special needs kids with IAPs. They've become invested in their local communities within their schools. They've created relationships with staff members, and you're asking them to move now and create whole new different relationships, along with dealing with the circumstances that they have with their conditions. It's extremely unfair. How come in this county, when we have important decisions like building a solar plant or building new subdivisions, that we send out mail orders, mail orders and information packets, but with this, we have not gotten anything in the mail listing the pros and cons of each side? I feel it's been extremely rushed, and now we're getting this in April, and we have to make the decision for August. We need time for the community to weigh the pros and cons, see what's best for them, and then when we have all this feedback, make the decision. Because when we make the decision now, in five years, we're going to have an overcrowded Cortland, a continually developing county, and Massiaponics is just going to be back where it is. My suggestion is, is that we wait for the 2021 school year, when we are planning a comprehensive redistricting of the whole county, to weigh the pros and cons of not moving everybody at the same time, but also adding AP classes to every high school so that every high school student has the same opportunities afforded to them, making it so that every sport is at the same division within the county. It should be a county-wide thing, not just certain schools being at level 6A and Cortland being at level 3A. It needs to be uniform without the county. Every student should be awarded the same opportunities, no matter what school they go to. We also need to think about building another school. And I have right here the frequently asked questions about high school redistricting, and nowhere in this document does it suggest that this county has a plan for building another facility. We can move boundaries all we want, but in the end, if we just rely on sending kids to Spatsy, then three-quarters of the county will be going to one school, and busing will take hours for those students. And we will soon run out of places to hide the dust. We can't just keep sweeping it under the rug. We need new facilities because we are rapidly growing as a community. We are slowly becoming Northern Virginia. And in more developed and urbanized areas like New York and Boston, they have multi-level schools and larger facilities where they can accommodate more students, and they also have specialty schools in the county where students in, who want to be teachers or who want to work in hospitality or the medical field can go and get specialized training. And we need to think about that here because we are growing. My own neighborhood, Lee's Park, is adding 300 new single-family homes to the neighborhood, and that's going to be causing not only the high schools, but the middle schools and the elementary schools to be bursting through the seams. And we, it's just becoming too big of a problem, and we've been given this time to create a solution, but we haven't. And I think this is kind of the consequences of not really thinking out the, like, we had, it's been since 2009, and we've known this has been a problem, but yet we've just continued to do research projects, find out what works, what doesn't work, but there's been no action plan. I think it's really showing, and an action plan that was created earlier would have solved this problem, that took into consideration all the disparages in athletics and curriculums.
Mr. Fitzpatrick, forgive me for interrupting. Just wanted to let you know your time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
Ed Hackler.
My name's Eddie Hackler. I reside at ninety-six oh eight Hazelbrook Court. I am in the Lee's Park District, and I am for this move, this rezoning. I think it is a good thing for the students not to have to be overcrowded, excuse me, in a school, so I think it's, it's a really good thing. Thank you.
Davian Mathis.
My name is Davian Mathis, and I live in Lee's Park. I live at five two one seven Yellow Birch Drive. And I just have a couple of things I want to say. We have 126 days to hire four new teachers. We currently have four openings per school, so actually we have 21 openings currently for high school teachers in Spotsylvania County. If I were to do the math, there are only five high schools, so if we have currently 21 openings- to do the math, there are only five high schools. So if we have currently 21 openings that have been open since September of this school year, it's now April 1st. That means that for the entire school year, 21 teachers at the high school level, those positions have not been filled. I don't know where they are, but if I just spread it around, I'll say that's four teachers per high school, which means that Cortland High School already has four openings that they have not been filled. If we move 300 students to Mass, from Mass Aponics to Cortland, that means that you're going to need 15 additional teachers to accommodate those 300 students plus the four that you already have open. That's 19 teachers that you need to fill in 126 days. If you move 500 students, that means that you're going to add an additional 15, 20 teachers plus the four that you have already currently opened, 24 openings in 126 days. In 126 days, you're going to need to recalculate the class rankings of over 100 students from, at the junior and senior level. That means that every student that you move, whether you're moving from Mass Aponics to Cortland, from Cortland to Chancellor, wherever it is that you're moving them, you have to recalculate the class standings for all of those seniors and put them in contact with the counselors and hope that they are able to build new relationships as they prepare for their per sec- post-secondary education in 126 days. 126 days, you're going to have to come up with a plan for over 800 students that you're moving around the county. 126 days. And I say that because it's April 1st, school starts in August. You only have 126 days to make all of these changes. You're going to have to come up with new bus routes. You're going to have to match the, the rigor from each of these schools. Mass Aponics, as the young lady stated, has 26 AP courses. They don't offer that at Cortland. Not to say that they can't in the future, but in 126 days with 20 possible teaching openings, you're not going to be able to do that. When we think about what our teachers make in salary, that's a tall order to fill in 126 days. I'm not opposed to the rezoning. I'm opposed to the rezoning for this school year. You don't have enough time. 126 days is not enough time to get my lawn to go from brown to green. It's just not going to happen. You guys, if you take the 126 days and add them to the 180 school days, which every school in the country has, that gives you 306 days of planning. You're rushing this and it's not doable. And what's going to happen is you're affecting rising juniors and rising seniors, you're affecting incoming freshmen. You have over 800 class schedules that you're going to have to adjust in 126 days. You're putting an influx of 100 seniors into Cortland, about 100 seniors, um 100 juniors into Cortland from Mass Aponics. 126 days is not a long time, people, to make these kind of choices. We're not saying that it shouldn't be done. We recognize that there should be several things that should be done at Mass Ap- at, in the county in general. I've said to you guys before, you need to consider doing specialty schools, you need to offer an arts program, a STEM school. You have the space around the county to do that. When we say that Mass Aponics is overcrowded, you all came to, someone came to Mass Aponics and spoke to the parents and admitted that over 200 students leave Mass Aponics before 12 noon. So in actuality, you're not really overcrowded. They're going to the governor's school, they're going to the Career and Technology Center, or they're going to Germana to do dual enrollment. So when we say this, we're not actually taking into consideration what's actually happening from 7 to 3 o'clock in the afternoon each day. You're going from a 6A school athletic-wise to a 3B school. There's so many different things that you guys are not taking into consideration in 126 days.
Denny Aguirre.
Hello. My name is Denny Aguirre, and I live at 9519 Charles Field Drive. I'm pretty much representing a lot of the Fox Point community. I think that there has been a misconception to them that the Cortland kids don't get affected, and in reality, they do. Um we do agree that there is um a problem that needs to be remedied, but um we don't think that the way that it's going about is correct. Um I think that on paper, it looks great, but these children are, they're children, they're, they're people that, you know, work hard. And in my case, I have a child that I home schooled for five years, and we made the decision to actually put him into the school. Well, we actually chose that home because of the school that he was going to go to. And we did it because academically we, we thought it would be great, and we thought that athletically, it would be great. So I have a child that skipped the grade, went into, you know, high school. He has E's and B's. He is um doing amazing in soccer and just everything. And for these implementations to be taken without really, it feels like without considering them is very, in a sense, hurtful because you don't want to see them go through what's going on. So with that being said, um you know, everybody has stated this, and I'm just going to state it as well, that the way that they're going to be combining these children that are coming from another place that is not equal, it hurts them um as far as like the AP classes and things like that. Um and the way that our children might even get bumped going into the um to, you know, with the sport, because my son is going to be a junior next, next year. Um we think that the best thing for right now is to extend this to the 2021 school year so that maybe some more ideas could be put down, and maybe we can maybe even find different solutions. Um personally, I think that building another school would be the best option, but I don't, I can't say that that's the only thing that could be done. So um another thing is, is that if this happens to happen, maybe a consideration of, for the juniors and the seniors to be ranked separately in the school. I heard that this has happened in the past, for example, when Mass Aponics started, that the, let's say, the Mass Aponics kids had their own ranking in comparison to the Cortland kids because they're kind of getting thrown together, and then all of our kids are just going to get thrown down, even though they've worked so hard to be where they are. Um other than that, I think the best thing to do is just to wait, if possible. Thank you.
Alex Akiri.
Hello, Alex Aguirre from Fox Point subdivision. I mean, not to beat a dead horse, but it's clear everyone, for the most part, has the same opinion. I don't think, we can't say the change doesn't need to occur, but it needs to be planned out better. Um something more long-term, something more broad, so it's all trickled down slowly versus crammed fast. Uh again, not taking into consideration of the kids. Numbers look great on paper, but the differences in schools, the programs, all needs to be evaluated, maybe incorporated into the other schools so they're not as affected as that. Um overall, like I said, I know change is inevitable, but better planning should be done on, on your guys' part, being over our schools, and that way, our kids are least affected. That's all I have to say.
Salina Batista.
Good evening. Um while I agree with the need for potential rezoning um to address the issue of overcrowding at Mass Aponics High School, I, like so many others who have echoed this sentiment, believe that we're rushing. How are we sure that Cortland High School, that's knee-deep in the midst of a renovation, will be ready to accept these 400 to 500 students that we are going to bring there in August? I currently teach an adult ed class at the Career and Tech Center, which is adjacent to Cortland High School. And so when I arrive on Tuesday and Thursday nights, I look over at the building and I can see it's a construction zone. And I'm sure that the students who are currently there, while happy that they will have a beautiful building in the future, it hasn't been pleasant, I'm sure, to attend school in the midst of a construction zone. And so I'm just wondering, how sure are we that by August, Cortland will be ready to house these additional students and offer them something better than the overcrowding at Mass Aponics? Are we just moving them from being overcrowded into a construction zone and being in several trailers? So I would just ask that we wait until we're sure that the school can accommodate them. Uh my daughter, who is a, currently a junior at Mass Aponics, will elect to stay and hopefully get her license so she can drive herself there. But my other two children, who are at Parkside and one who will be going to Spotsy Middle, you know, in the future, if they're at Cortland, then fine. I just worry that the school is not going to be ready to accept them in August. Like I said, it's a construction zone. And I just don't know if moving from the overcrowded situation that they're accustomed to and have learned to work with, and trying to force them into this new situation, is the best thing for our students. Thank you.
Nicole Cole.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Cole, and I am in the Battlefield District, and I have two students, a rising senior and junior at Cortland High School. I'm representing myself and other parents in the Fox Point community. When I say it's naive to assume students at Cortland High School will not be impacted by either option one or option two, we believe they can be impacted greatly, either positively or negatively. I am here today to express what I feel is necessary to mitigate any pain or negative impact on our students. Because the last two years of high school are the most critical, critical for a student, I am most concerned that you view our students not as numbers to be shifted around with no thought of implementation, but keep them whole. Thus, the mitigating necessities and consideration of either option, um which I feel if you move forward, I am sensitive to the overcrowding at Mass Aponics, but there are things that can help mitigate this tran- the pain of this transition. Um I feel that juniors, rising juniors and seniors both need to have generous grandfathering. I feel that the students that move over from Ponics should have a dedicated counselor who comes over from Ponic- Mass Aponics with them to service them and their needs that, and so that they have someone familiar who has been working with them during this period or during the past two, three years, um so that they can continue to have some consistency. I feel this is also important for the Cortland students because we already have um too many students with each individual counselor, and adding on additional students to that load is not going to be beneficial for the Cortland students who aren't moving. Third, I feel the student rankings for Cortland students and Mass Aponics transfers need to be kept se- separate, at least in the next two graduating classes, the class of 2020 and the class of 21, 2021. Last, it's unclear to me whether the 2020 budget, which I support as necessary, has considered the needs for additional teachers at Cortland with either option one or option two, which raises my concern that the learning environment in Cortland in the most critical years, the ju- junior and senior year, remain intact with this transition. If you move forward with this transition, please focus on keeping our students whole at minimum with mitigating factors and making sure that they are implemented well. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Journey Cole.
Um my name is Journey Cole. I am a rising junior, and I attend Cortland High School currently. Um my main concern, as others have stated, is the um rankings. Um Mass Aponics offers a different curriculum than Cortland, namely the AP Academy, and the students enrolled in that have had an opportunity to, that those extra AP classes can positively impact their GPA in ways that um the courses offered at Cortland cannot. We don't, the students at Cortland have not had the opportunity to have those, to take those classes, and so their GPAs don't get the same kind of boost. So if the Ponics students were to come over to Cortland, um we would need to have separate rankings because me, me and my fellow students could possibly be displaced out of, through no fault of our own, just because we were not offered the same coursework and like course options, which also, as others have stated, we need to even that out and make sure that all the schools are offered the same types of courses, because it's not fair that one school has more advanced course offerings and another doesn't, and that shouldn't change the way that students learn. Um another thing, despite the renovations, and I have been going to school throughout them renovating the school, um I, one side of the building has finished renovation, renovations for the most part. And I don't feel as though the classrooms are all that much bigger. I don't know what can be done about this, but for example, um one of my classes has about 28 students, and we are, it's hard enough as it is, tried and, trying to get seats for everyone. We have to cram three students onto a couch in the room, and the pods we have outside the school, the classrooms in the pods felt much bigger. And I don't know how, if the other side of the building, which is currently being constructed, is just a copy of the side that is already finished, I don't know how those classes are going to be big enough to accommodate more students if we are already a little bit crowded as it is in these new classrooms, which feel smaller. And um another thing, Cortland's auditorium is this, one of the smallest high school auditoriums, and it is not being renovated. And so I don't, I don't know how, for assemblies where all the students have to get together in the auditorium, we are definitely not going to be able to fit any more students. And those were my main concerns, and I don't know if anything can be done about that, but if something can be done about the, that spacing issue, then something should be. Thank you.
Joshua Cole.
My name is Joshua Cole. I live in Fox Point. Um my main concern is that I'm concerned with the amount of attention seniors will need from counselors, from the counseling staff. I feel that Cortland needs, already needs another counselor just to support the number of students we have now. Um so I ask that you make sure that Mass Aponics students will have their own dedicated uh counselors.
Excuse me, son. Uh could you raise your mic up?
No.
There you go. Now, wait up, bend up. There you go.
Uh I'm very concerned because I am, me and my fellow students are preparing for college and will need application assistance, recommendation letters, and um recommend, will need counselors to recommend scholarships. Um last, I agree that it would have a negative of impact on student rankings because Mass Aponics transferring to Cortland, um them having different courses and AP classes could nega- negatively affect Cortland's students' high school um rankings. So I ask that those be kept separate as well. Thank you for your consideration of us as students. Thank you.
Lisa Friendsley.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak. As you said, my name is Lisa Friendsley. I live at 5815 Deep Creek Drive. I am also in Lee's Park. And while I understand that this is an issue, this has been an ongoing issue since 2009, I do not support at all the rip off the Band-Aid approach that the county is taking with this. I think there needs to be more consideration. I don't think we've drilled down the numbers far enough. I echo everything that's been said tonight about the courses, the sports, the kids already being very embedded in their schools. And I think more time needs to be considered. And I would ask that you all consider a slower approach to this problem. One of the suggestions that I would have is that, again, while we are not, we have not, I don't feel that we've been privy to all of the numbers, I'm curious as to whether there are rising freshmen who have no siblings at Mass Aponics High School, that we can start with those freshmen. I think it's unfair to rip families in half and have some going to Cortland and some going to Aponics. Personally, I have a rising senior and I have a rising sophomore. And while I could probably get that sophomore wavered up, there will be a few months that I would have to worry about transportation once my senior's gone and my sophomore is a junior. I would also like to know in the numbers, how many seniors are graduating this year from all the communities that are affected? And have those numbers been included in what's going to be happening? I understand that transportation is a big issue. Like this young lady said here, there are not a lot of families who can provide transportation, but to rip them out unfairly in their junior year or their sophomore year after they've been entrenched in the schools for so long, I think is completely unfair. So again, I just ask that you take a softer, longer approach to this and leave all the kids that are currently at Mass Aponics and their rising siblings so that families don't have to be split. Start with the freshmen who don't have any siblings at Mass Aponics High School. Thank you.
Jason Weber.
Good evening. My name is Jason Weber. And my family live at 9502 Everett Drive in Everett Estates. We weren't privy to go to any previous meetings, so we just found out about this redistricting, I would say, within the last week. So I have a son, we have a son who attends Cortland. He's a rising junior. He'll be going to his senior year. So I would hope for those students that they would have an opportunity to apply for some type of a waiver so that they could actually stay there. Specifically, when we moved here to Spotsylvania County, we did so in mind with where the schools were located. So I'm not exactly sure how the lines were drawn as it now stands. If our children had to go to another school, it would be Spotsylvania High School. We're currently only 2.2 miles from Cortland High School versus seven miles from Spotsylvania. So I push my kids to be active in sports and extracurricular activities. I work up in Springfield, not being selfish, but telling my story. I work in Springfield, so on those times coming home, instead of being able to pick my children up and go home, I would actually have to pass my house and drive seven miles and then come back home. So I would hope that there are some other plans or some other options in place. And perhaps if some have already said that this can be delayed until a more amicable solution is in place that would be best for everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all the speakers that signed up.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Is there anyone in the audience that did not have an opportunity to address the board that would like to speak? Let me start with the lady in the back that had her hand up, and then we'll go to the gentleman down front.
My name's Teresa Gurney. I'm at 1101 Ascot Circle. I ask you to take consideration of special needs children that are rising up to high school. This affects me personally. I have an autistic child that would be moved from Cortland to Chancellor. We have already done the articulation meeting, and not just for my child alone, but how about all those other parents that have gone through, their child has already started their transition to the high school. It is very hard for these children. And we really need to consider how it's going to affect them and their high school career. Yes, juniors and seniors are very important, but so is the freshman year, especially with these children. They need to be, I understand there does need to be a change, but please take more time to consider everybody's needs in the county, all the children, especially those with special needs. They need it. Thank you.
Teresa.
There's a gentleman here in front.
Please, can you please sign the sheet up there, the sign sheet, please? So we can get your correct information. Thank you.
So we have this gentleman here in the front, on the front row on my right. And would you please, sir?
Good evening. My name is Carl Janney. I live in Everett Estates. I've sent emails to my Berkeley district rep and the county board, Mr. Marshall. I've been through redistricting before. I'm a longtime Spotsylvania resident. I have two grown sons. I graduated from Chancellor. I now have a grandson that's a sophomore at Cortland. I've been living in Everett Estates around four years. I picked that subdivision because I wanted my grandson to go to Cortland because of the situation we were in. I was out on Route 3. I redistricted out of Chancellor to River Bend. We came this way. It's happening again, and that hadn't been that long ago. One of my main concerns is the time element involved. I didn't become aware of this until a little over two weeks ago. I get a phone call at five o'clock in the morning when there's snowflakes falling, telling me that school's been canceled or delayed. I get an email. I had no idea. My grandson told me a couple of weeks ago that he's seen this notice on Snapchat about redistricting and Everett Estates was going to be affected. So I went online, did some research. I talked to the homeowners association in Everett Estates. He knew absolutely nothing about this. There's 32 homes in there. And I detailed in my emails that the statistics that they come up with are wrong. On page 10, for instance, they listed four high school students. And then on page 12, on the inset maps and everything, they reversed it and said we had six high school students. And to my knowledge right now, there's only three high school students in there. One is a senior who drives to school, and there's only two that ride the bus. So I have a problem with the numbers. I have a problem with the time element involved in this. I really didn't know anything at all about any previous hearings until I went online and found this one for April 1st. So here I am. I know that it is a problem. There are solutions, and not everyone is going to be happy. But this one is bothersome because, as the young lady talked about, the teachers and shifting around and all of that, there's not that much time to get this accomplished. A young lady mentioned the construction of the Cortland. Yeah, my grandson has been through that. He's been in the modules. He's been in the regular high school. I don't think that's going to be done. And then you're going to have all of these kids being moved around. It just doesn't make sense right now for the timing. So at the very least, I would like to see it put off for an additional year and have some really good study done and have numbers that are factual that when the proper people get all of the information and disseminate it to the county residents so that we can make some informed decisions, I think that would be the best way to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Was there, there's a young man in the back of the aisle there. Would you please come down? Help him with the mic, please.
Good evening. My name is Angela Freeman-Pate. This is my son, who is sitting in the audience. He came to participate tonight, and he decided that he has something to say to his school board. I'll ask him to introduce himself. And we are at 6119 Blackstone Boulevard, Cortland Elementary School.
Go ahead, Trey. Introduce yourself.
My name is Trey, and I want two counselors from my school because I think my school will need it.
Because you said that again, we couldn't hear that.
I want two counselors at my school because I think my school will need it.
He's asking for additional guidance counselor resources at his school. Is that all?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, you're on the aisle. Go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kimberly Wells, and I am at 11218 Ascot Circle. My daughter is an upcoming sophomore, and she is in jeopardy of being rezoned from Cortland to Chancellor. Like many other parents have mentioned tonight, we chose our home based on where our child would go to school. This actually motivated us to move after my daughter's seventh grade year, starting eighth grade, so we would be in the proper zoning. She could have a year in middle school to transfer to high school. She also, being a sophomore, starting her sophomore year, she's going to be upset for me saying this, but she's shy. And she's done really, really well this year. She has joined clubs and groups. She has auditioned for choir. She has an upcoming trip that she is supposed to perform in New York in October. These are things that she would miss if this rezoning happens. We're not fortunate enough to be able to transport her if and have the waiver. So I would like to ask that, yes, if this, it does feel rushed. We just found out about this also, as many other parents have said, about a week ago. We received an email that said if you would like to speak. We started Googling and looking for information. Things are just difficult enough for high school students, and I'd like to ask that we not make that more difficult. If we could just slow it down and make it so that it's easier on everybody. It's not just moving Mass Aponics to Cortland. You're going to be moving Cortland and Chancellor, and you're going to be moving kids everywhere. And I'd just like to ask that you guys consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. While she's signing, is there any others in the audience that would like to address the board? I can't see. Please come, you can please come forward.
I had planned on commenting, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity. My name is Johnny Sanders. I'm at 5215 Yellow Birch Drive, Lee's Park. I'm not sure if I'm opposed to this move or not, but however, I am concerned with the level and quality of education my daughter's going to receive. She's about, she was about to go into Mass Aponics, and from what I understand, with these plans, she'll be attending Cortland. Now, she's been honor roll student since first grade. If they had in kindergarten, she would have achieved it there also. And the opportunities at Mass Aponics are good. She's already signed up for AP classes, and if I could be assured that when she arrives at Cortland, that that quality of education will continue. And again, if she don't get a good, solid education and a chance to excel, I don't want her living in my basement when she's 30 years old. As a matter of fact, I want her to be able to help take care of me. If I can get assured that, I have no problem with any of the suggestions. But the quality and opportunity for education is, those are my concerns. And I appreciate your time. I'm trying not to keep everybody here too long. Thank you very much. And I appreciate you guys' hard work. These are elected officials, and we'll remember that, and thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. And I fully understand your desire to move your children out of the basement.
Yes.
I got mine out as well. Is there another in the audience that would like to speak? Ma'am, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Christina Chaney. I live at 6804 Plantation Forest Drive in Plantation Forest Subdivision. I didn't really want to speak, but hearing others who are saying that they feel that this is being rushed, I do agree with them. I have a son who graduated from Cortland High School, and he had a great experience there. My daughter is currently in eighth grade at Spotsylvania Middle School and is really looking forward to going to Cortland High School. Attended the orientation night that they had a couple of months ago. Is looking forward to trying out for their cheerleading team in May. And right now, she's feeling some anxiety, thinking that she's possibly going to have to go to Spotsylvania High School, and is unsure what her plans are going to be as far as sports are concerned. And she's already filled out what her classes would be at Cortland. She has about a 95, 96% average with advanced courses in middle schools. She's a bit OCD and a perfectionist, likes to plan everything out, and is really feeling a lot of anxiety about this potential rezoning. And for me to not know what the next step is going to be, you know, I feel like I can't comfort her. I feel like Spotsylvania County schools have a good education to offer, no matter what school they go to. But I feel like this is very rushed, and it's causing a lot of anxiety that's unneeded for her freshman year at this time. So I would like to request that we slow this down a little bit, look into other options, and look into getting some more feedback from the community. Because I think with more voices, being able to be heard, and other ideas being able to come forward, that maybe we could come up with a better solution and everyone could feel a bit more calm about this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I see a lady in the back. You can please come forward. Just give her a second to finish. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Crystal Weber, and I live in Everett Estates, 9502 Everett Drive. My husband already came up and spoke, but I wanted to take an opportunity to speak on behalf of my son, who is a junior now at Cortland High School and will be a senior and is looking forward to being a senior at Cortland High School. I mimic my husband's comments about why we moved where we did in Everett Estates three years ago, and we had Cortland High School in mind when we did so. My son was very quiet, very reserved, not really active. He's not a sports guru, but he's very musically inclined, and he's been in the music department in Cortland now for what would have been all four years. He's looking forward to continue that. He's in marching band. He's in orchestra. And he's also in winter drum line. They just received their first place, first place. They just received their first, um, first place, first placement in the winner drum line, uh, A-one-A, uh, competition this past weekend. So he's really excited about continuing that trend with his teammates, with his classmates in the upcoming school year. So I'm not opposed to the rezoning. I understand that things have, uh, changes must be made, uh, as it re, as it, uh, refers to the, um, overcrowding of schools, and you can't always anticipate how many students are going to be in each school, but this does seem very, very rushed. I learned about this two weeks ago, and it was just by happenstance. I saw an email from our, um, HOA president who said, in case you weren't aware, and it just seems like this is just not a good time to do so. If you could please reconsider, uh, rezoning right now. It's, selfishly, I want my son to continue in Cortland High School, but I do have, we also have a daughter who is, will be going to eighth grade and would have been going to Cortland. I haven't even looked at Spotsylvania. I have no idea what they offer, but I like what my son has been offered thus far, and I'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board that didn't have an opportunity to speak? Ma'am, please.
Hello. I'm Siobhan Miller. I live at, um, ninety-three-twenty Blue Pine Lane in Lee's Park. We have three students at Massi-Ponix, a senior who's about to graduate and go off of college, and we have twins that are sophomores going into their junior year. One of our twins, um, she's already got her classes straight for next year. She's detail-oriented. She knows what she wants to do. She wants to be a cognitive therapist. So her classes for next year are geared towards her career. She takes, um, she volunteers in Mary Washington. She does, helps with the nursing program. I feel like with her, if we was to move her to Cortland, I believe it is, or Chancellor, I'm sorry, I don't, um, I got my schools mixed up, that would hurt her as far as her academics, her, her, um, her school, um, her coursework, everything. My other daughter, who's a twin, the other twin, she runs track. Aleah Pyatt is her name. She's already been set up. Her coach is great. She's doing a great job. She's number six in the nation, fastest in four hundred. Um, we recently received a letter from the House of Delegates, Robert Ork. He wr, he writes, "Dear Mr. and Mrs. Miller, as I was reading the Freelance Star recently, I saw the article about your daughter, Aleah's, competing in the New, New Balance Nationals in New York. I commend you two for encouraging her at such, to run at such a young age, and then encouraging her long-term interest in skill in running. Your commitment to her running and her sports is bearing fruit. I hope she continues to pursue the sports and remains injury, injury-free. In close is an extra copy of the article that you should share with your family and friends who are no doubt proud of you all. If I can be, be of assistance to your daughter in the future with, with state legislative matters, please contact me." I read that to you to say, she's doing great, too. She has D-one league colleges looking at her. She's in a great track program here at Massi-Ponix. If you were to move her, that would affect her in the long run as far as colleges, sports, everything. So I have one that's wanting to be in the medical field. She is on a path of greatness with that, and I have another one who is an athlete who's doing great there. We would hate to see any of that go downhill. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board but did not have an opportunity to do so? I think I see a hand up in the back. Please come forward.
Hi. My name is Megan Wells, and I live at one-one-two-one-eight Ascot Circle. And I don't think that it's fair to all the kids that go to Cortland that had to sign up for classes and that they got into the class, but if we have to go to Chancellor, that we get, we won't be able to get into those classes because all the kids that are at Chancellor already, already signed up for the classes and got into it. A lot of the kids that live in my neighborhood are also going to the New York trip, and if we get rezoned, we won't be able to go, which we all worked hard, and we did lots of fundraisers to do that, and people in our family have donated money that they won't be able to get back, but that doesn't really matter anyway. But it's just not fair to the kids that have to go to a new school and compete with all the other kids when we could stay where we're at and not have to worry about being scared to fit in with the other kids or compete academically or with activities. Thank you.
Dr. Martin, does she need to sign the, did you want her to sign the book?
If you could, please. Thank you.
While she's doing that, if we have anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board that has an added opportunity, please raise your hand so you can be recognized. I see none. The chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms., uh, Ms. Graham, if you have a second. Second by Ms. Shelley. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you to everyone for being here. We all appreciate it very much.